All our meeting here to order here for the Cadillac Planning Commission, August 25th, 2025. I guess we did that. So if everyone, if able, please join us for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Shippers.
Here.
Host.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Bunts.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Van Pelt.
Here.
Putvin.
Yes, here, that too. Okay. I need an approval of this evening's agenda again, August 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Support?
Putvin.
Yes.
Fosher. Baumann.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Next approval of July 28th, 2025, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Baumann.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunts.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yeah.
Fosher. Putvin.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
We have a public hearing this evening. There's a proposed ordinance that would allow short-term rentals as a principal use permitted, subject to special conditions in the B3 general business zoning district in section 46-427 of the Code of Ordinances. Having read that, Ms. Teresa, guessing is taking this.
Yep. A moment here so I can get this. There we go. So this is in regards to the short-term rentals in the B3 general business district. At your regular meeting on July 28th, 2025, the Planning Commission instructed city staff to prepare and process an ordinance amendment permitting short-term rentals by special land use in the B3 general business district. The definition of short-term rental. Short-term rentals are defined by ordinance as a furnished residential unit, including an apartment, house, room, or any living space in a house or apartment that owners rent out for a period of fewer than 30 continuous days in any one month. The short-term rental zone district. Short-term rentals are permitted by right in TS-1, TS-2, which is tourist service districts, the B-1 auxiliary business district. Short-term rentals are permitted with special approval in the B-2 central business district. The B-3 district overview. Section 46-425, the B-3 district provides for many diversified business types. This includes most of the uses permitted in the TS1, TS2, B-1, and B-2 districts. The B-3 specifically permits several lodging accommodations, including residential units such as an apartment, motels, and group shelters. However, unlike the above districts, short-term rentals are not listed as a permitted or special The proposed amendment of the section 46-427 of the city zoning ordinance. This section of the city zoning ordinance, which regulates principal uses permitted, subject to special conditions, in the B-3 general business zoning district, is amended by the addition of a new subsection 11, which reads as follows. Section 46-427, principal uses permitted, subject to special conditions. Short-term rentals, subject to the requirements of Article 6, special land uses. The Planning Commission action. The commission shall make a motion to recommend approval or disapproval of the proposed zoning amendment to section 46-427 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cadillac, Michigan, to allow for the short-term rentals, subject to special condition, as presented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So having you read that, this is a public hearing. Any other comments from staff or anybody? But moving, okay?
Mm-hmm.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, based on this ordinance zoning change. So anyone wishing to speak anything in favor or against, please come forwards to the podium, state your name, and sign the piece of paper, and good. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. My name is Nick Latar. If you don't remember me from last month, all right. Yeah, kind of how this got kick-started a little bit here. I know it's, this isn't directly about me, but it directly affects me. So I just wanted to give a little more context to my situation and what I've gone through in my whole journey to try to make this happen. So just giving a little background here. So my path to gain approval for this short-term rental at 8:20, South Mitchell in the B3 district, started about three years ago. I was searching for a property I could potentially live out of, as well as make into a business or a short-term rental, to just help supplement some of my income. And having these as my main checkmarks for my realtor while searching for a property, we came across my property that kind of checked all the boxes. And, you know, we saw within the zoning ordinance, I should be able to do short-term rental, pending possibly a special use permit. And this was confirmed to me by a former zoning committee member, Mike Coy. So this purchase was, it proved difficult. It was abandoned, it was dilapidated, unable to pass inspection with the previous owners of the building with their permission. I began construction on the building to bring it up to code, not even knowing for sure if I would be able to be approved for a loan. But I put in the work and the money to make the building deemed livable by inspection standards, and thankfully, I was able to be approved and make the purchase of the building. So my first step was renovating the upstairs apartment in hopes of updating everything and getting it, getting it nice enough to make desirable for people to want to stay there short-term and use that income to help pay off credit card debt and begin renovations on the main level. So after almost a year, I completed renovations on the apartment and went to the city to get approved for the short-term rental. I spoke with Mike Coy again and confirmed that it, you know, via the written ordinance, it should be fine. But bringing this up to John Wallace, it was a different story. He was immediately shot down. The main reasoning saying I needed to be providing a service, and short-term rental was not deemed a service in his mind. Any logical rebuttal I had, it was not taken into any consideration, and it was dismissed. He told me I could file an appeal with the Planning Commission, but he told me it was a long shot, as at that time, not much was being approved. However, he did assure me that the new zoning plan was in the works, and once this was complete, I would be able to do short-term rental without issue. I asked about a timeline. He said about six months. After about two years of not hearing about any progress with the rezoning, I went to the city office and asked for an update on the zoning. Not only was there virtually zero visible progress on zoning updates, there was an amendment made in the old zoning in my district, saying it was essentially the only business district that could not do short-term rental. So it appeared I was lied to and blocked from making any progress on the situation. And so later on, I was asking what my options would have been, and I was told my best chance, my only chance would be to apply for a rezoning. And it was basically said that they were not planning on recommending it, but I could try anyway. So yeah, just to summarize, just to wrap things up here, my having a short-term rental on my property, it's only going to positively impact the community and tourism in my eyes. And the only person it could really negatively affect is myself, as I'm holding all the liability. I have no neighbors to disturb. And honestly, I don't understand why I've been blocked in doing this. I mean, I'm really just trying to survive and make a little bit of extra income and have a chance to eventually thrive. You know, with this, with my substitute, I've had the long-term rent, which is fine, but, you know, I've lived out of my basement for years, which isn't ideal. I wanted to do short-term so I could actually live out of my apartment, at least part of the time, and just kind of catch up and get the debt down and, yeah, just give something back. I really wanted to add something to this part of town. I've been working hard on starting a business there, which could have been paid off, you know, had I been able to do this when I originally asked for it. And I'm just kind of falling deeper and deeper in this hole, and I'm just hoping that we can get the ball rolling and get to where I should have been in the first place in my mind. And anyway, thanks for hearing me out, and that's about it, I think.
Take it, Nick, here in favor of us forwarding this request on to council.
Yes, please. Yes.
All right. Okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else in the audience have any input on tonight's zoning upgrade? That's what we're doing, upgrade now. Okay. All right. Seeing no one else in the audience come forwards, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And we requested this, so to go on to council.
Can I, may I?
May you, please.
So what possible reason would there be that this would not be included? Would it be included in all the other business districts, but not B3, where we have motels in B3? What, does anybody have any idea of why that would be an issue?
Yeah, honestly, I don't know why that wasn't originally part of the codification. Obviously, the previous editor isn't here to ask that question or answer that question. But I do believe that this use fits in with the other uses that are in B3.
I know that, that short, that there was no zoning for short-term rentals not too long ago. And we designated specific areas for it, quite limited. But hoping that the stalled zoning would continue, because that was always my hope, and there were various things holding it up, I think we're moving forward now. And I really think that, you know, when you consider that part of town, and I know we don't zone for individuals, but when you think of where it is and, and what the other uses in the area are, I mean, it could only be an improvement. Am I right?
Yeah.
So.
For some reason, in the master plan, it was stated, the no.
Right.
But that's on our plate in the future, too.
Yes, it is.
After the zoning is done, right?
That's right.
You guys can do it after the zoning is done.
Thank you.
Were we to approve this, will he require a special uses permit?
Yes.
Okay, so that's next little, sure, okay.
And that's, that's important to me. In one, in one reason, there's a B3 chunk on Holly Road, as an example, right in the middle of R1. It's the test center. But as long as there's a special use permit requirement, then the commission can always look at whether it's appropriate in that space. That's why I think it's appropriate in B3. It's the central business district with multiple accommodation options, in a way that this isn't inconsistent with our plan, with the master plan and the general ordinances.
That's correct. I agree.
Well, it sounds like you just made the, yeah, the motion.
Well, if appropriate, I'd be glad to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that the Planning Commission approve and recommend council approval of an ordinance amendment to section 46-427 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cadillac, to allow for short-term rentals, subject to special conditions, as presented.
I'll second. Roll, please, Danielle.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Bunts.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Fosher.
Fent.
Yes.
Thank you. That was pretty easy. All righty. All right. Moving on to new business, 910 Aspen Street, which kind of, we had a small preview a couple months ago. Yeah.
Missed that here.
Yeah. So having done that, who's running with this?
Oh, I am.
Okay. Ball's in your court, young lady.
All right. So good evening, Planning Commission members. I first want to just remind you that in your staff report, the packet that I'm going to be talking about this evening was in there. I'm just going to just reiterate, just highlight some things, so we're not going to go through that whole entire process of going through the staff report. This is just a condensed version that I'm going to read out loud. So I'm here to talk tonight about the Aspen View Apartments for the 910 Aspen Street. This evening, we have Dan with us here, and I'm going to give him an opportunity, when I'm finished, to come up and talk, please. So the Aspen View Apartments is proposing to build a two-new duplex building, which is four apartment units total, on a property that currently is vacant. Excuse me. The site sits at a RM-2 zoning district, which is meant for multifamily housing and acts as a transition between single-family homes and non-residential areas nearby. The addition of these duplexes will add a small number of new homes to a part of town that is mostly single-family, helping us meet the demand for more housing options, while still keeping the project in scale with the neighborhood. The plan includes open green space, landscaping buffers for residents. It's in line with the city requirements. The development will connect to existing municipal water and sewer. The grading will be done to make sure drainage and accessibility meet our city standards, with minimal disturbance to the land surrounding. The site plan follows all city rules for the setbacks, the lot coverage, and building height. We've looked carefully at how the building's driveways and the parking area are arranged, and the plan prioritizes safety for both cars and pedestrians. The site was previously home to a single-family house that was demolished in 2023. There are no previous approvals for multifamily use here, so this is the first proposed development of this kind on that property. City staff has reviewed the plan and finds that it meets the requirements for RM-2 district. It provides enough open space and fits well with the surrounding area. The city will require final engineering and utility plans to be reviewed, and all necessary permits obtained before construction starts. Landscaping and buffering will need to be installed, as shown on the plan. So in summary, this project meets our zoning requirements, supports the city's goal of offering more diverse housing choices, and staff recommends approval, subject to all the standard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Woodcock, sir, hi.
Hello, Mr. Public. Hey, everyone. Thank you for entertaining my, my proposed project. I hope to actually add some really nice apartments for the community. I want to do more of a high-end, high-end development, as far as aesthetics on the exterior. And then I'm putting in gourmet kitchens and, you know, they have the laundries and in-floor heat. So it would be kind of a special thing to, you know, because I'm close to all the shopping and close to the hospital, so I really want to appeal to the medical community, as far as providing housing that is suitable to their taste and pleasing to the community. Hopefully, it's a win-win for everyone involved.
So you're building these for sale or rent?
To rent. Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be two buildings. Each one's 28 by 54. Each apartment has kind of private parking, private entrance. They also have an eight-by-12 covered patio, so it's kind of an amen you don't normally get in an apartment. And they're on nice lawns, and so it's going to be some, it's nice to come home to, pleasant, private, and there's kind of a quiet part of town, so I think it's going to have a lot of appeal for the, for the tenants and for the community. I provide more than enough parking, you know, two separate parking lots, providing five parking lots per building. So there's two, essentially, two parking spaces for each unit, plus a spare for visitors in each of the parking lots. Sidewalks, five-foot-wide sidewalks going to each of the units. We have to have a lift station to evacuate the sewage from the property. So as a part of the development, I'm hoping to put a utility building on there that's going to be partially over that lift station, so that the part of the chamber where the lift pump is, I can be under a roof, so if I have a calamity during foul weather, I'll still be able to attend to it. And then that'll also provide a place for me to keep my maintenance equipment for the property, lawnmower, snowblower, that kind of thing. I also have to have a place for irrigation controls for my meters to hook up, so I'm going to, so that's another part of the utility. I have one thing that I would like to throw out there, and I presented to Abigail on the utility building, on the side of the utility building, it seemed like a great opportunity to put my signage, Aspen View Apartments, with a phone number. But apparently, that's not allowed. You can't put signage on a building. But it would actually be quite attractive, and it would circumvent having to install another structure to provide the sign, because the structure also, also be part, and it's aesthetically designed for appeal to the signage. So I don't know if I'm requesting a variance on that, or just throwing that out there for food for thought.
Food for thought.
Yeah. It's kind of a thought.
Be upfront.
All right, yeah.
Now, it sounds like a good project that you're undertaking.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't realize it was you that was going to do it, but.
Well, I haven't got financing yet, so we'll see. I'm going after tax abatements right now. Does the city offer anything in the way of incentives, tax incentives, for the type of development that I'm doing?
That is not our job. There. But we have staff people that.
Talk to those guys.
Do I talk to you about that, Danielle?
Yeah, we can talk after the meeting.
Okay, all right, thanks. I guess that's it for me, then.
Any questions for Dan on his proposed duplexes?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the site plan as requested, with the conditions of approval as laid out in the staff report.
Sounds great. Second. Who, Jean?
Fosher. Bunts.
David.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Perfect. That was the first part of your puzzle.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good to see how much we can do. Yeah. Zoning code rewrite.
Yes.
Okay.
So today, I had the pleasure of talking to Progressive, who is going to be in charge of assisting us with the zoning rewrites. Danielle, myself, and Abigail had a teams meeting with them this afternoon. First, they just wanted to introduce themselves, and we introduced ourselves to them. We have a contract that is going to be written up. We asked the question about, let's say we get into the whole process, and we see a need for one section or one area that we need extra help. So we wanted to have a choice of how much the à la carte would be for any extra. Also, we have a little bit of extra funding in the budget, not a lot, but that's there if we need it to. The next thing that we talked about was, we're going to meet again in about two weeks, and at that point, we're going to collaborate and go over all of the things that we have been seeing, and writing down notes from John, notes from Jerry, notes from both Abigail and Danielle, myself, just a little bit of time I've been here, also the phone calls that we get from residents and other things, just showing what concerns are, questions that we might have, just going all of that with them. So we're going to dive deep, have probably an hour or two-long meeting discussing all those things, and then start bringing it to you guys at every meeting. So you might start to get a little sick of it, but it's going to be on the agenda at every meeting. My goal is to have it completed by March, but realistically, it'll probably be more like April. Right after that, as you know, my goal is, let's jump right into the master plan, right after that. So it'll be great to get this finished and get it started, so that's where we're at with it.
Wonderful. Any questions for Teresa on that?
I wonder if it has a.
Nice. It's nice to see that things are moving.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. And I think Danielle's taken this one. September meeting date that we did discuss at our last meeting.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, the Lakeland Apartments was on the agenda, and the commission was willing to maybe schedule a special meeting pending the traffic study that the developer had, had to get done, and then as well as final site plan revisions. I've been in communication with Kyle, the developer, and the traffic study is scheduled to be completed tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. That company is, thinks that they'll have the study back to us, no, or back to Kyle no later than the 12th. We have a meeting set up to meet with Kyle and the engineering department on the 15th to kind of go over that study, see what needs to happen out of that study. And the request would be that maybe we move the Planning Commission meeting back a week to allow for staff and the developer to kind of tie up any loose ends prior to bringing the final site plan to the commission for possible approval. Wondering if maybe September 29th at 6 o'clock would work for the commission. If not, open to looking at other dates, the end of the week before, or maybe that Tuesday as well.
So that would be our regular meeting and special meeting. You're going to tie us together.
Right, yeah.
Just want to move.
So essentially, we would, we would cancel the regularly scheduled meeting for the 22nd, and we would call a special meeting for the 22nd. second, and we would call a special meeting for the twenty ninth. Even if you guys vote today to, to do that, we would still publicly cancel the twenty second and publish as a special for the twenty ninth, or whichever date you decide.
Sounds like a plan.
Actually, can't make the twenty second to twenty ninth works.
Oh, look at that. Just catering to Joe's schedule. Okay.
You, you don't need a motion, I mean, do you?
It would be nice to have one.
Make a motion that we cancel the regular meeting of the twenty second of September and reschedule for the twenty ninth of September.
I'll support it.
You could, you could do it without me, right? I won't be here the twenty ninth.
Yeah, I just need five.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, we definitely want to make sure that we have quorum before we do this.
Have to.
Perfect. Everyone thinks that's gonna work for their schedule, or a majority. Perfect. Okay, roll call. Shippers.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bunts.
Yes.
Basher. Bowman.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Van Pelt.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Excellent. Uh, old business, nothing. Communications, does Teresa have something?
No, I didn't add it this time.
Okay, I got, I went over top of you last meeting, so I'm including you now, by gosh. Okay, board member comments? Everybody good? Everybody going away for the holiday or have fun, whatever? Okay. Any public comments? Anybody in our public can comment, almost on anything. No, there being nothing. No other business, and.
Move to adjourn.
Everyone have a good evening, and we're out. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.